To my left, Hillary. Grace, you good to get started?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We're live?
All right, we are live, everyone, on YouTube. And we'll get started. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. We will start with our pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
This is Ramsey Smith.
Present.
Dr. Enix.
Present.
Ms. Queattack.
Present.
Leon.
Santa.
Dr. Van Wordt.
Present.
Ms. Wilhelm.
Present.
And Mr. Cologne.
Present. Thank you. So as typical, we're going to start with our public comment this evening with a five-minute time limit. We will start with any subject not being voted on this evening before our second public comment. For comment on any ordinances or resolutions, anyone watching at home, if you want to follow along live, I encourage you to scroll ahead if you start this meeting past 7:00 PM. I will start with whoever signed up first. And then we are gonna go with, it looks like Shayna Mora was our first person signed up? All right. So we'll go to Ms. Anna Smith.
Good evening. My name is Anna Smith, and I live at 631 Ridge Street in South Bethlehem. And I'm the Director of Community Action Development Bethlehem, which is a nonprofit dedicated to community development on the south side. I'm here this evening to provide an update to members of council on the efforts of our south side coalition to support a community-determined public use for St. John's Windish Church on the south side. As you have heard previously, St. John's Windish and its parking lots are in the heart of the south side community, and whatever happens to them will undoubtedly have a significant impact on the future of the surrounding residential neighborhoods. The future of these sites for our community is of extreme importance at this time of significant neighborhood change on the south side. I want to publicly express gratitude to the congregations of the future Blessed Trinity Lutheran Church, who graciously invited many members of the south side community to worship alongside them and participate in a meeting regarding the future of their churches. This truly extraordinary gesture of the joint congregations speaks to the generous and community-minded spirit that these churches have embodied for over 100 years in our community. While they may no longer have a physical presence on the south side, we are glad to know that their good works will continue in the city of Bethlehem once they find a new home. I can personally say that I'm hopeful that members of the St. John's Windish Church community will participate in the community-driven process to plan for the future of the site. Although the church will no longer have a physical home on the south side, we hope that members of the congregation will continue to think of the south side as another home, and that some will have a voice in the future of the building and the parking lots. As discussions have continued among members of the South Bethlehem community, we've been struck by the unique, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that lies before us, the chance to implement a community-driven plan for the adaptive reuse of the St. John's Windish Church buildings and its parking lots. You will have likely noticed that the city administration has not yet specified a particular use for the property, other than to identify addressing housing needs for our neighborhoods as one of the potential uses. And that's because a truly public purpose, one that will benefit as many folks in our community as possible, cannot be defined by a single person, and certainly cannot be defined within the walls of City Hall. It's up to our neighbors, small businesses, and community stakeholders to share their visions for this space, and to collaboratively come up with a plan that embraces an alternative model for community and economic development with community at its center. What would this process look like? Well, it's certainly not up to me to decide, as I'm just one person in the south side community, but you can count on, at the very least, community action to provide the administrative support necessary to make this work. We'll commit to that. And here are some of the components that we would prioritize. A community-driven process will involve neighborhood meetings in every area of South Bethlehem, east to west, to listen to the ideas and suggestions of every resident for the use of these spaces. We will meet in our schools, our churches, our parks, our neighborhood organizations, to hear from as many community members as possible, and anyone who wants to play a role in planning at a deeper level would be invited to do so in whatever capacity they'd like. A community-driven process will consult with all our local stakeholders that work and spend time in our south side community, our small businesses, our nonprofits, our major institutions, too. A community-driven process will look at what the data tells us our greatest needs are, data that we and others have already collected, and data we will collect through surveys and conversations. A community-driven process will be multilingual and accessible to all. But perhaps most importantly, a community-driven process will be led by community members who live in our neighborhoods, not just one or two, but a team of neighbors who will compile the feedback, thoughts, dreams, and ideas put forward by our community, and then work with the city and our nonprofit partners to come up with a plan to make these ideas a reality. This process will be transparent and open to anyone in our neighborhoods who would like to participate. Community members will have the opportunity to provide input at every stage, and the final plan will be reviewed publicly at the same places where feedback was initially sought, our parks, churches, schools, and community organizations. At no point will the project be handed over to any single individual or organization for completion. Community members will provide oversight and engagement in an ongoing way, which will continue indefinitely as the buildings and parking lot adapt to new uses. We've received the city of Bethlehem's commitment to engage in this process, and we are confident that our eight elected officials here tonight will follow through with this process. We will ask the same of any ultimate buyer or future owner of the sites, but I will be honest in admitting that I feel our best hope for a truly community-driven process lies with the city of Bethlehem. While there are many incredible people doing community-oriented work at Lehigh, from the Community Service Office to the fantastic initiatives funded by community affairs, to the professors engaging in research in our neighborhoods to support our community, just to name a few, the institution is ultimately beholden to the interests of the Board of Trustees, and rightfully so, as a private institution with $2 billion in endowment and assets to manage. It's hard for me to envision a scenario where the institution cedes control of the future of these properties to a group of south side residents, despite the best intentions of the administration to engage the community. I have no doubt that Lehigh will seek south side input, but in my experience, that input is accepted or rejected as it fits into a larger institutional plan. I do not begrudge Lehigh for acting in its own self-interest. I'm just not sure that their self-interest is the same as the community's. I'm here tonight because I want to engage you, our elected leaders, in envisioning with us a democratic, community-driven process that places the south side community at the center. We have an extraordinary opportunity to do something great for our community, and if the city is successful with their purchase of the properties, I look forward to holding each other accountable for doing the right thing for our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. That concludes everyone who had previously signed up before the meeting, so I'll go around the room. Again, this is public comment for anything not being voted on this evening. Is there anyone to the left who wanted to make comment on anything not being voted on? I'll turn to the center. Anyone in the center? Mr. Shire?
Bill Shire, 1890 Eaton Avenue. I'm going to speak about something very prosaic tonight, borderline trivial compared to the excellent remarks from Anna Smith. But I'm going to talk about some signs again, not the ones in the garage that clash with each other this time, but the ones on Church Street, on this side of Church Street, going from, say, the mailbox to Payroll Plaza. I'm going to talk about restrictive signs and lack of signs. Lack of signs first. In the 20 years I've been back in my hometown and coming down here, I have lost count of the number of times I've given directions to people as to where to find the police department. I find people standing at the main entrance to City Hall in the after-hours, wondering what to do. The doors are, of course, locked. So I tell them to go to the left side of the building, then turn right into the garage, where they will find signs directing them to the police department. Incidentally, if you come in from the west side of the garage, there are no such signs, and so people have to drive around the garage and thinking, well, the police department must be somewhere, and hopefully eventually they find it. So what we need is a sign at the main entrance, say, after hours, this is how you get to the police department. The fact that this has not happened in the last 20 years is befuddling. I mean, a city of 75,000 people with a budget well over $100 million cannot put up a basic and simple sign. The other signs I'd like to comment on are the ones for one-hour parking until 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. What's going on Saturday? I don't see hordes of city workers coming here to work some overtime. I'm at a loss. And why 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday? City Hall closes at 4:15. The work hours extend to 4:30, but they recently started locking the doors at 4:15 instead of 4:25. I know this because I tend to pay my real estate taxes at the last minute. I guess the thinking there is that they don't want people coming between 4:15 and 4:25 with a piece of business that would tie up some city worker past 4:30. Be that as it may, I'm willing to compromise at 5:00 PM for the signs. Why is there one-hour limited parking between 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM? If you freed that up, you could make it easier for people to park, to come to meetings like this, and promote citizen participation, which we all claim to be in favor of. Again, a city of 75,000 people with a budget well over $100 million can't correct a discontinuity, if you will, in a simple parking sign. It's embarrassing, actually, and the more you think about it, the more embarrassing it becomes. Hopefully, visitors to the city don't think about it too much, because, well, that's enough for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shire. Is there anyone else in the center who wants to make comment this evening? Mr. Antalics?
Thank you, sir. Stephen Antalics, 737 Ridge. A small group of parishioners of St. Peter's Evangelical Lutheran Church on Pacra Avenue petitioned the courts to give them a permit to build their own church. And they called themselves then St. John's Slovenian Evangelical Lutheran Congregation. The church then became St. John's Windish. No, they changed the name. The St. Joseph's Wendic, the German W is a V, St. Joseph's Wendic Society, announced plans to build their own church. A 1917 headline, local papers said, Slovenian church has first mass today. An inversion. In order to find the charter for St. Joseph's Church, a visit was made to the Archdiocese of Philadelphia, and the archivist searched Heinele and could not find it. And the gentleman suggested, go to the Vatican, they might help you. So the question became, how do you do that? Well, talk to the Defender General of the Vatican. How do you do that? An email address was supplied. So an email was sent to the Defender General of the Vatican, asking for the history of St. Joseph's Church of Bethlehem. Now, as you go up the ecclesiastical letter, it gets very flowery. "Beloved child," and "sacred duty," and so forth. And they told the... The answer was, we cannot find any record of St. Joseph's Church of Bethlehem in the Vatican records, but we suggest you go to the Protector of the Holy Land. Wow, so how do you get to the Protector of the Holy Land? An email address was supplied. So an email was sent to the Protector of the Holy Land, asking about St. Joseph's Church of Bethlehem. Now, the language really got flowery. And they apologized and said, we're sorry, we can't find no record of any St. Joseph's Church in Bethlehem, but if you think we're wrong, we invite you, dear child, to come visit with us, and we'll help you search in your holy quest. Then the sender realized, oh, wait a minute, I'm talking about Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. And they're talking about Bethlehem, Jerusalem. So the email sender from Bethlehem then sent to the Protector of the Holy Land, apologizing for the error, and said he now understood why the reason for the international dateline was to differentiate between Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, and Bethlehem, Jerusalem. But apparently, the Defender General did not have a sense of humor and didn't feel a need to answer. But anyway. An anecdote. In Europe, in certain places, the German word "wend," which is W N D, is a pejorative term for any Slavic people living on German territory. In some areas in Europe, the word "wend," which is German in Bethlehem, it's a Windish, is actually equivalent to our N-word, but people don't know that, so, but interesting history there.
Thank you, Mr. Antalics. Is there anyone else in the center who wanted to make comment this evening on anything not being voted on? Anyone? Mr. Hirsch? Good evening.
Alex Hirsch, 738 Center Street. Same topic. I'll be brief. Oh, no, my date tally. Here we go. 186 days as a homeowner unable to legally park in a residential permit area. Just a quick observation, with yesterday being a holiday, the Parking Authority was not enforcing residential zones, and to the best of my knowledge, the city did not descend into chaos and anarchy. So just putting it out there that maybe we could survive without that level of oversight and governance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Anyone else in the center? The broad center? To the right. That concludes our first public comment. Moving on to the second public comment this evening, there is no one signed up. So I'll go around the room again if anyone wanted to make comment on anything that we're voting on this evening. I look to the left. I turn to the center. Mr. Antalics?
Stephen Antalics, Sun Ridge. I cannot comment on Lindsey Michelle Clifton. I know nothing about this person, so I hope they're the best qualified. I'm not going to make a comment on what I've been harping on for months now. And the interesting thing is, I've been getting emails, phone calls, and I've been across it in a public place, commenting on actions to try and get some people appointed who are highly qualified. So I think we should have a moment of silence for this person.
Do you have anything else to add this evening, Mr. Antalics?
Sir, I have my five minutes. I'm contemplating another thought.
I'll allow you to keep contemplating for a moment, Mr. Antalics.
All I can say is, please do your job and be the check and balance as a legislative to the executive and a caretaker for the interest of the city's citizens in terms of appointments, but I think you all know who I'm talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Antalics. Is there anyone else in the center who wants to make comment on anything being voted on this evening? And I turn to the right. That concludes public comment tonight. Moving on to old business. Any old business from members of council? Seeing none, going on to communications, Communication 6A.
Memorandum dated December 21st, 2022, with an attached resolution from Edward Bascola, Director of Water and Sewer Resources, recommending a contract with R3 Construction Incorporated. Project is for the installation of approximately 600 feet of water main along South New Street, between Third and Fourth Streets, to support planned new development and serve existing customers. Contract cost is $233,250. Completion deadline is 180 days from the notice to proceed. There are no renewals.
And Resolution 10B is on the agenda. Communication 6B.
Memorandum dated January 3rd, 2023, with an attached resolution from Edward Bascola, Director of Water and Sewer Resources, recommending a contract with K.L. Fulford Associates Incorporated. Contract is for the operation and management of the East Allen Township Drinking Water Well Systems, including 24/7 emergency call-out. Contract cost is $36,500 for one year from January 1st, 2023, to December 31st, 2023. There are two additional yearly renewal options at $36,500 each.
And Resolution 10C is on the agenda. Communication 6C.
Memorandum dated January 5th, 2023, with an attached resolution from Edward Bascola, Director of Water and Sewer Resources, recommending a contract with Core and Main LP. Contract is for equipment and labor for the installation of water meters and advanced metering infrastructure endpoints. Contractor also shall provide project management and data integration with the city's billing software system. Contract cost is $1,632,500. Contract shall run from the notice to proceed to December 31st, 2023. There are five additional one-year terms at a price to be negotiated annually pending availability of capital funding.
And Resolution 10D is on tonight's agenda. Communication 6D.
A January 5th, 2023 memorandum from Police Chief Michelle Cott, with an attached resolution and agreement for the purchase of a duty weapon by a retired officer of the Bethlehem Police Department. Pursuant to the Third Class City Code, retired officers may purchase their duty firearms at fair market value.
And Resolution 10E is on the agenda. Communication 6E.
January 6, 2023 memorandum with an attached resolution from Eric Evans, Business Administrator, recommending a contract with Lehigh Valley with Love Media. Cost is $18,000 for social and digital media consultation and production analytics assistance with city communications, and a production of promotional and informative videos related to city services and government. Contract term is January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. There are two annual optional renewals.
And Resolution 10F is on the agenda. Communication 6F.
A January 4th, 2023 memorandum with an attached resolution from Edward Bascola, Director of Water and Sewer Resources, recommending a contract with Pact II LLC. The cost is $1,630,000 for general construction work at the wastewater treatment plant. Substantial completion is to be attained within 365 days from the notice to proceed. Final completion is to be attained within 395 days from the notice to proceed. There are no renewals.
And Resolution 10G is on the agenda. Communication 6G.
A memorandum dated January 11th, 2023, with an attached resolution from Edward Bascola, Director of Water and Sewer Resources, recommending a contract with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated. Cost is $167,830 for Amendment 4 to a contract entered into with AEOCM in May of 2021 involving a chemically enhanced primary treatment system at the wastewater treatment plants. Amendment 4 adds engineering services during construction and construction management inspection services to the project. Contract expires on March 31st, 2024. There are no renewals.
And Resolution 10H is on the agenda. Continuing on to reports, I have no reports this evening. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, a couple of reports. First of all, I have one administrative order. I hereby appoint Lindsey Michelle Altevater Clifton, 833 Belmont Street, Bethlehem, PA 18017, to the Bethlehem Housing Authority. This appointment is effective through November 2027.
Any discussion on the appointment? Oh, I'll let you read.
And the resolution is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Thank you. Any discussion on the appointment? I'll just briefly say, while I don't know the appointee personally, I know they've been attending a lot of meetings, been very involved outside of City Hall and a lot going on, and glad we have, you know, a lot of, or anyone willing to volunteer their time and give to the housing authority, so I will, of course, be supporting this tonight. Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Okay. I just have to say, I was thrilled when I saw Pastor Clifton's name as an appointee because I have the utmost respect for her. I interacted with her on different boards and at different events throughout the city. My only question is, is this in place of a current vacancy, or is this an additional position on the housing authority?
It is. Someone's appointment had run out, and we had appointed Ms. Clifton to fill that position.
So is there now, is there still five positions, five people that are going to be on the housing authority, or are there now six?
No, there are five.
So this is a position in lieu of someone else? Okay. And can you say who was, whose term expired on the authority?
I know we had sent it over in the email, but I do not have it in front of me.
Ms. Ramsey Smith, I just may interject. I had asked the same question of our clerk previously. I don't have the email in front of me, but that name is in the communication that went out from the clerk's office.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion from members of council? We will call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Queattack?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wordt?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne?
Aye. Passes 7-0. Thank you. Ms. Collins has a couple of reports to read.
Hi, good evening. Two reports. The first is on the Community Recovery Fund. So nonprofits and community organizations will be able to submit applications starting on March 1st, and the applications are planned to remain open for two months. So this is just for the first round of funding. You'll recall that we put in the budget $3 million for the Community Recovery Fund for this first round. We're granting up to only $750,000. So we're going to connect with the community to get this message out on social media, email, on the website. We'll probably ask council to help spread the message and our other, you know, community partners to get information about the recovery fund into the hands of the people who will ideally be applying. And we want to reach as many organizations as possible, and also make the funds accessible to as many organizations as possible, recognizing that applying for grants recognizing that applying for grants can be very time consuming and really challenging for people who don't have grant writers. We're putting a few steps in place. On February 1st, we're going to be holding just an informational session. And then it'll be via Zoom at noon and it'll also be recorded, so it'll be available later. And we're asking interested community members who want to learn more about the grant to join the Zoom session or to watch it later. So we'll talk about program eligibility, the application process itself. We'll be able to answer questions. And then we're also going to do a separate taping of just like the literal clicking and filling out of the online application. So people can understand sort of question by question, you know, what, what's being asked. And that'll be available online as well. Second update is on the comprehensive housing strategy. So as you know, we're going to be presenting to City Council over a series of three Community Development Committee meetings about the status. So in the first two meetings, those are scheduled for the next council meeting, February 7th, before the meeting, and then March 7th before that council meeting as well. So those first two, we're going to be talking about what we've learned or what we know about the state of the housing market, current housing needs and our opportunities and limitations as a starting point. We're going to be reporting on what we learned from the 3,500 people who responded to the housing survey in the city of Bethlehem. Also on the housing needs assessment that the reinvestment fund has completed and the updated MVA. That's the Market Value Analysis. So we'll start talking about, you know, what that means and how that informs what we're currently doing. And then what we're going to be looking at as far as strategies when we're going through the process of prioritizing for the final report. And so then at the third Community Development Committee meeting, which we haven't scheduled yet, probably in the late spring or summer, we'll report on the actual, you know, final comprehensive housing strategy. Another note, we also want to make this information available to the broader public. So on February 8th, we're having an open community meeting where we'll largely talk about what we present to council the previous night on the 7th. So we'll be here on the 7th. We'll be at the Northampton Community College Fowler Center on the 8th and inviting, you know, in addition to, you know, the people who are on the We Build Bethlehem site and who completed the survey there. We're going to be reaching out through all the means we reached out to get people to participate in the survey and letting people know that we'll be having this community meeting where it'll, like I said, it'll largely match what we do here on the 7th, but it'll also be a little more probably accessible to the broader public, a little more interactive. So we are asking our people to RSVP and if you've received that, maybe in your email from Sarah Satullo, there's links and information there for people to sign up. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. And just a couple of things to add to that. I want to thank City Council as well for approving, I believe it was the last two months of what turned out to be Ms. Allen's position. I think we did that back at the beginning of November or the end of October. The administration had come and asked for those, for a few dollars there to be able to hire somebody to get them on board. So then we could make progress on getting that application process together. Ms. Allen has been hard at work, but that was only possible and we're only having that conversation tonight rather than two months from now is because City Council was supportive of that. So I want to thank you for that. That's, might seem like a small thing to some people, but it really helped that process along. And one of the things that she has been working on is that idea of, and Ms. Collins mentioned this, is in that all of that money is not going out in one particular round. We're trying to take away some of that fear of the urgency of missing out if you don't get something in. So we obviously can send all those dates to you, either Ms. Collins or Mr. Satullo can. But that idea that some of the information would be shared in that virtual session on February 1st, but then also obviously available in other manners. The application process wouldn't start till March 1st and it'll be open for two months. And that would just be the first round. So we are trying to also create some flexibility there without knowing exactly where all of the other money is coming from that are coming through the federal state governments. So we want to make sure that we are planning that well. But I really want to thank Ms. Allen, Ms. Collins, Mr. Satullo for all their work there. And then also I just want to thank many members of council that reached out after we had our visit from Senator Casey last week, who was very appreciative and thankful and impressed with the city of Bethlehem's collective ARPA vision for how we necessarily want to spend those dollars in the short term and the long term. And one of the things that he had mentioned to me was that it is a testament to the community in that our city council, our administration, our nonprofit groups, our citizens are all on board to be able to get behind such an ambitious plan. So I want to thank you for that as well. Uh, and then my last, uh, report, Mr. President Cologne, is that obviously we've had a lot of, uh, conversation publicly about the situation with the churches that are for sale on, uh, in South Bethlehem and the one church on, for sale in North Bethlehem. And we had sent a letter over to, um, the Blessed Trinity Lutheran Church Congregants today that I believe we had passed out a hard copy to you, but I just wanted to read that, read that letter, President Cologne. "When I first ran for office, Bethlehem Steel was gone and its closing had shaken our city's identity. We were struggling economically and we needed to drive investment into our city if we were going to avoid the fate of so many other post-industrial cities. Debt, population loss, and empty storefronts all were on the horizon if we did not get up, dust ourselves off, and go to work. Thankfully today, the story of our reinvention and economic revitalization is well-known. Primed by publicly financed tax incentives, thousands of new jobs have been created. Demand to live in our city has never been higher and we continually find ourselves on the list of the most desirable places to live in America. This success comes with new challenges, challenges that test the fabric of who we are as a community and threaten our core history as a city that leaves no one behind. For more than 100 years, Bethlehem has been a place our parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents could come without a lot of money, find a job, and live the American dream. In City Hall, we think of the American dream as more of a promise to our citizens. If you work hard, we should be able to promise that you can live a life of security, dignity, and respect. We did not invent those ideals or that promise. It is the foundation of our city's history, our communities of faith, our school district, and the community organizations that support our residents and define us. For far too many of our residents, that promise is on the verge of being broken. Keeping the promise of possibility has been our number one priority since the day I was sworn in as mayor. Our vision for the future prioritizes people and the communities that make our city so unique, diverse, and special. We have been and we will continue to be unapologetic in championing this vision. There's nothing to apologize for when your mission is to help people. As a city, we have added staff, dedicated our time, and allocated millions of dollars to turn our motivation into a mission and turn our vision into a reality. We do not view it as a choice. It is a responsibility that we embrace. Opportunities to make a real impact on the challenges facing our city do not present themselves often. When we learned of the blending of your three Lutheran congregations and the sale of your properties, we felt a mixture of emotions. Reflection and sadness that the years of contribution of the individual congregations in the current spaces is coming to an end. Optimism for members' new opportunity to worship as one congregation and see their properties used in new ways that carry on their mission-driven legacy. Hope that the community could play a role in the property's future. Excitement that these properties could be used to tackle the challenges facing city and Southside families and residents. Over the past year, we have personally heard from many of you who care deeply about the communities where you have worshipped for decades. Many of, many of you have relayed as well that you want to do right by the residents, call these neighborhoods home as well as those who will in the future. We in City Hall share that goal. Our goal from the start has always been to honor the legacy of the congregants who are dedicated to your faith mission and social justice. That mission aligns with our vision for Bethlehem and for the future public and community use of the properties. We have learned through news reports that unfortunately our mission and other information has been lost in the process or misunderstood. We are writing in response to that confusion in hopes of starting a dialogue about who we are, what we believe, why we got involved, and how we can find a path forward that furthers our shared and important mission of service and public good. The city has heard from neighborhood residents for more than 25 years about the strategic importance of the St. John's Windish Church in the adjacent parking lot. Residents who spoke with mayors Cunningham, Callahan, Donches, and City Council were not just speaking for themselves. They spoke so the families and children who followed them could also come to Bethlehem seeking a true community, the stability of their own home and a neighborhood to call their own. We write in response to the direct pleas of South Bethlehem residents and church neighbors who over many years have spoken loudly and often about the property's place in this changing neighborhood. We have and will continue to commit to conducting a public, community-driven planning process to determine how best to use the sites. We are, we are supported by a diverse coalition of Southside residents who will help shape this process. As a local government, the city of Bethlehem is best suited to ensure a transparent community planning process takes place. A city answers to its citizens in a way that a private institution does not. We believe this makes us, as a local government, best suited to lead this open conversation. We know housing is a top concern of our citizens. And the sale of your properties offers the city and community a rare opportunity to conduct a public process to influence the Southside housing market. Our housing crisis may not affect us all, but it is affecting many of us, including your neighbors. Over the last three years, Bethlehem's median home sales prices have increased by 20, by 52%. The rent for a one-bedroom apartment rose by 57% over the same time period. Housing is just one area that is at a crisis point for our community. Inflation, food costs, recreational opportunities, unmet public health needs are all areas where our residents are looking for the public, looking to the public sector and their elected officials to lead, stop the bleeding, and build systems that leave no one behind. The good news is that in a space traditionally dominated by private developers and large institutions with deep pockets and control over large percentages of land in the city, we finally have the resources from the federal and state government to be a real force and driver for the public benefit. When church members reached out to us and church leaders invited us in, we committed to partnering with you during this process. We expressed our desire to provide housing solutions and protect community interests while preserving your properties and your legacy. We remain committed to that partnership. When the properties went up for sale, we respected the direction we received to communicate via the Realtors and let the designated process progress. But we often asked exactly what the congregations wanted in this sale and what they needed to make this partnership work. We believed our $3.5 million offer included terms that the congregations were looking for. And we believed it to be the start of an ongoing dialogue to reach a deal that benefits everyone. We were clear, we were willing to come back for further discussion, negotiation. We did not imagine that this opportunity would be denied. Without an opportunity to make our plea directly, we publicly stated we would match Lehigh's current offer as we understood it. That is how important this effort is to us, the residents and the future of South Bethlehem, which throughout its history has been threatened by powerful forces that have different goals and priorities for these spaces. The city has the cash on hand to pay for the properties. We are ready to work with you to move this forward quickly while addressing your needs as we have always been. That is how important this effort is to us, the residents and to the future of South Bethlehem, which throughout its history has been threatened by powerful forces that have different goals and priorities for these spaces. We understand this is a difficult and confusing time for everyone as you continue the process of transitioning into a new congregation. In the spirit of our joint mission and if the congregations desire, we would welcome an opportunity to come answer any of your congregants' questions about our community-driven mission, motivations, and goals and to, and to continue this dialogue. If you instead choose Lehigh University as the buyer of your properties, we will join community leaders in being disappointed, but will continue our conversations about the future of South Bethlehem for our families and residents with the new property or Lehigh University. We again thank you for your decades of ministry and commitment to our city. We are richer for your contributions. Thank you for your consideration of our mission and we look forward to working with your current and future congregations on our shared goal to build a city for everyone and leave no one behind. It is a spirit and truth that is with us always. Thank you, President Cologne.
Thank you, Mayor Reynolds. And I know this is something that had come up previously during new business to the last meeting. I obviously was not here physically the last meeting and was unable to, um, speak with audio issues at the previous meeting. So if you don't mind, Mr. Reynolds, I would just talk a little bit about what's going on and the status of the churches. The, uh, just question before I get into a couple of comments and then I'll open it up to other members of council. The, the only immediate question I have to, to your knowledge, Mayor Reynolds. I know I had read reports that the, the decision to, to sell the properties had been postponed by the, the congregation. Do you know if there are any immediate plans for, for the church to make a decision on, on what to do with these properties?
We obviously do not speak for the churches, but we, we are not aware of any, any date or anything.
Understood. And then just a couple, couple of comments on just the whole, the whole process as it's played out for the last couple of weeks. And I've been following weather pea news reports, social media posts, different perspectives from whether it's different, uh, private entities, community groups, individuals, family that I have that live, you know, in the Southside neighborhoods and things like that. And I'll simply share what, what I attempted to articulate during budget season and as we're voting on the budget that, this is a very unique time for Bethlehem when we talk about what we have right now in terms of our financial resources. It, it's easy to look back at, at any point and whenever you went to and say, well, why didn't the city do this then? Why didn't the city buy this property? Why now? Why is it, why are you, why these properties? And one of the things we talked about during budget season, we, we didn't always have the financial resources to do that. The city's cash balance wasn't one that we would dip into cash to acquire properties like this. The American Rescue Plan now puts us in a position to have financial resources where we were able to have public budget hearings and talk about that we earmarked dollars for different initiatives. What's going to happen here, um, obviously is time will tell. But we were in a position now for our 2023 budget to, to put these, these dollars forward for certain things that were conversations that weren't being had over the last year, two years pre-pandemic, or if they were, they were sort of not as, not as pronounced and loud as they are now. So again, just as it relates to sort of the, the why now, why these properties? Why is the city, you know, having these conversations now? It's the right time. And as it relates to these, I, I don't know what's going to happen. I'm not a realtor. I don't know how these transactions work. But I do wish the administration all the best. And I know that whether it be a few members of council or members of the community that have been very involved in, in their own time and members of these, the different congregations of the different churches who have had ongoing conversations for a few months, that this is really a unique opportunity to do something that starts with, as we spoke about at committee meetings, the acquisition of land. We cannot, as someone had mentioned at a previous council meeting, we can't manufacture space. We can't manufacture land. We all know we've been having these conversations that the, the price of real estate, as Mayor Reynolds alludes to, just what, what the average sale of homes have been and rents, while buying just dirt is not cheap. And we don't know when we're going to have another opportunity available like this. And also, uh, with the significance of we have that parking lot that is so strategically located right there on Fourth Street amongst our community, amongst our neighbors, amongst other service organizations also. So there, there's a lot of benefits to, to the why and a lot of backstory. That's not just simply that it's not only, it's a broader conversation. And, um, like I said, to those who are spending their days trying to reach out to these congregations and negotiate this, I wish you nothing but the best. I appreciate the administration keeping council informed and also as other council members have, uh, been involved, like I said, and members of the community. So I'm really, you know, anxious to a degree to see what happens. Of course, the church and the congregation, they, they will decide whatever they feel, um, you know, is adequate. But I appreciate that this process has come to light and we're able to have somewhat of a conversation here in Town Hall and then other conversations outside of here. But since I've said my piece, I will open it up if there's other comments from members of council.
Dr. Van Werke?
Um, as the City Council liaison to the Bethlehem Parking Authority, I'm going to read a letter that was sent to us today from the Executive Director, Steve Fernstrom. I think this is an attempt to just address the parking authority's involvement in this issue. "The Bethlehem Parking Authority's owned and leased parking properties are strategically located in areas of the city to support current and future economic development and to allow accessible public parking inventory. This public parking inventory is crucial to avoid oversaturation of the parking system. Due to, due to many factors, including its density, the Southside neighborhoods are particularly susceptible to parking oversaturation. This makes our sound policies and the assets surrounding these neighborhoods even more critical. The BPA has leased the parking lot across from St. John's Windish for almost 20 years and has an active lease until 2026. It is also surrounded on all four sides by our most extensive and densest residential parking permit zone. Several months ago, I shared my concerns with City Council about what ill-conceived changes to our residential parking permit policies could do to the parking system. As we face losing the property across from St. John's Windish as a parking option, I now echo and amplify those same concerns. Our worries about losing this parking option are not new and were communicated well before December 2022." Our worries about losing this parking option are not new and were communicated well before December 2022. When we first heard about a potential sale in 2021, we proactively reached out to a member of the church leadership on several occasions to express our desire to purchase the property. Those conversations were very pointed and transparent. In those conversations, we conveyed how vital the parking lot was to our community and offered to purchase the property several times. We also disclosed the property's assessed value from our property appraisal, which was appraised at $1.2 million. It's the BPA's obligation to protect the parking system, especially for residents that could be disproportionately affected by changes that would disrupt it. While not easy, our decision to begin the eminent domain process on the St. John's Windish property was necessary because of what losing that parking option would do to the surrounding neighborhood. What caused us to pause the eminent domain process is our belief and confidence that the next buyer will have productive conversations with us to ensure that the neighborhood's parking system will stay in balance. We look forward to continuing our excellent relationship with city council and working together on any parking challenges. Don't hesitate to contact me directly with questions, comments, or concerns. Steve Fernstrom, Executive Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Van Wer. Any other questions or comments, Ms. Leo?
First, I wanted to thank CACLV, Right for Community Action, the YWCA, NAACP, Boys and Girls Club, everybody that came out two weeks ago to start having this conversation. And definitely to St. John's for inviting the community to come in and have a conversation surrounding what the future of those properties would look like. I can't ever remember another time where one of the churches that was leaving the South Side ever included us as part of, as part of like their exit strategy. And it was, it was really a, a very touching and beautiful moment. Multiple people from the South Side, including myself and my mom, went in to express our gratitude, our history with St. John's. It spans the entirety of my life and most of my mom's life. And I just, it's sad to see them go, but it's wonderful that they've been part of us for so long. And I, I don't think I'll ever stop saying this. I know that this is a very tense situation and everybody wants the right thing. But in the middle is, is a community and a congregation that's really struggling with how difficult these conversations and decisions are and what it might mean. But when I was there on Sunday, I got a chance to talk with multiple people and I wrote down all their questions because I didn't have the information to give them in the moment. So I'm hoping to ask the questions that they, that I heard the most often and see if we can get some clarity from the administration. Some of them are like very much city-related and some of them are Lehigh-related. I don't know how much we can do there, but so the, the first question that came up the most was that a big deciding factor between Lehigh and the city is that buying from the city was going to be very complicated with funding sources and a possible closing date that could be postponed multiple times. And I was just wondering if somebody can talk us through what that looks like if, if St. John's, well, if, if all of the congregations sold to the city as opposed to Lehigh.
I think it would look about the same as if Lehigh were the buyer. As President Klon said, we have the money. It's in the budget. We don't have to borrow it. And I think the closing process would be pretty much the same as it would be if, if the buyer was Lehigh.
Okay. The second one is that Lehigh has kind of alluded that they would allow the church to continue to use the sanctuary for, for certain events like feasts and stuff. And I was wondering if the city would be willing to allow the church to do that as, as well? Like use the sanctuary for special events while they're going through their transition process?
One of the things that, and I actually had visited the unit council a couple of months ago. And it was, and I think Ms. Smith had referenced it before in her comments, is that, you know, we very much wanted a community-driven process. We didn't want to say something that this is exactly what it's going to be, but also be flexible to what the congregants were looking for, including whatever that transition process would be. Is that we talked about how we would preserve the buildings, about how we wanted a community-driven process. But we also understood about why this was such a sensitive time for the congregants. There's a lot of history there. There's a lot that's gone on. So nowhere in this process would I say that we've ever been anything but what you need to be able, what the congregants need as far as the use of their space in the short term is no one's kicking anybody out. So that's, and I, and I probably said that 15 times when I visited them in the beginning of November.
I think that kind of is the third, the other question I had was if they do choose to sell to the city, would the city work with the churches to ensure that they aren't asked to leave until they find their, their next place of worship? So I'm assuming that that'd be the same answer. You wouldn't, it wouldn't be like we purchased today, leave tomorrow?
No.
St. John's has talked a lot about how crucial their legacy is to the South Side. And, you know, their legacy does run deep. I spoke to them about how St. John's used to host the South Side Neighborhood Center when our after-school programs got too big. But anyway, can you elaborate on when conversations around possibly acquiring St. John's started? And are you willing to commit to a community-led process, kind of like was alluded to earlier? And which would include St. John's having a voice in that process if they would like to be part of that process?
Yeah, I think as many people in this room know, is the future of what was going to happen to St. John's, the church, and the parking lot have been, has been talked about for years, including from the congregants and the church leadership. This is not a new conversation. I think from the time I got in city council, there was the idea that something was going to happen here. And the individuals associated with St. John's Windish were very committed in their conversations, many of which they have been the ones to initiate with the city over the years about wanting to make sure that the next owner of the property and the next use of the property and across the street was consistent with that mission. So I think that it's hard to say, because I bet you multiple people in this room have had conversations in the past couple of years. But we were approached last year during, you know, our first year as administration for more serious conversations, and that ultimately ended up with, there was a time when Ms. Collins, Ms. Tullow, and I were invited over to have a conversation with St. John's Windish. And I think that was maybe last, that was last summer, maybe. I believe it was maybe August or September. And then I was invited to talk to the unity council at the beginning of November. And that was when our kind of formal conversations happened. But I'm not going to pretend that I own that conversation because as, as, as I said, there's people in this room that have been having those conversations as just part of the community process for years and years, and previous mayors.
And I want to take a quick second just to say, I want to end that conversation right there because I really don't want much of the conversations surrounding the church to bleed into the questions I have about Lehigh because they're very different discussions, at least in my head, the amazingness of St. John's as a neighbor. I don't even like having to juxtapose it with, with my feelings as a South Side resident of how Lehigh has been as, as a neighbor. So I just want to take the minute to thank St. John's for their century-plus years in, in our community and how, how amazing it's been to, to have them and how wonderful it was to be able to be in that building with them and send them off appropriately. That being said, I would like to talk about Lehigh for a second. One of the things that was my understanding is that they were led to believe that Lehigh was going to have this big engaged process. And so some questions came up. And one of them was like, has the city had any communication with Lehigh about purchasing St. John's from Lehigh if they were to purchase it all? Because Lehigh's priority has always kind of been St. Pete's when you're talking about the South Side.
We've had conversations with Lehigh, as we've had conversations with everybody, that we feel, as has been mentioned here tonight, that the city is the best, is the best institution to run that community-driven process. You know, I would say we are, we are not going to speak for their motivations. We are not going to speak for what their goals are. But we have made it clear that we feel that this is obviously an important piece of South Bethlehem's past and its future. And we have been hopeful that we can come to some type of community-wide agreement as far as what that, what that community-driven process looks like, no matter who owns these properties. But obviously, as I said in the letter, and as has been mentioned earlier, is that we feel that the city of Bethlehem are the ones that should be, that it's our responsibility to be leading that, leading that conversation.
Has Lehigh indicated like any specific details or intentions on engaging in a community-driven process or what that might look like? And I know that you can't speak on behalf of Lehigh, but it's just my thought that if they were really committed to some kind of community-driven process, they would at least engage the city, who kind of tends to be the voice for the community. So have they reached out to you guys at all about what a community-driven process would look like from their end?
Yeah, I think they can speak for themselves on that. I wouldn't want to have us try to characterize what they feel or believe or would do.
We read the same, we saw the press release that I think expressed their, what, the beginning of what that process would look like according to them. But I think that's their official statement, and that's, that's the one that we would, we would be going by as well.
One of the other things that I've heard, and this was mainly from like city, like South Side residents as opposed to the churches, that there, there is a concern that the city would then just buy the properties and turn around and sell them to, to developers. And, you know, this is going back to a time in Bethlehem's history, way, way, way before any, anybody here held office. But, you know, there are, there's a history there and there's some real concerns. So I was wondering if the administration would say anything about what their intention, like, is, is it in the realm of possibility that the city would just turn around and sell these, these parking lots?
No, I would say that we are, whatever the public uses are that would go on there. And obviously, we've talked a lot about housing, is that we do not literally build housing. So I mean, just, I'm just going through a hypothetical situation here. Is that like a lot of different affordable housing projects, you partner with somebody that is in that business that can get the federal tax credits, that's able to use the different grant funding that's out there through PHFA and things like that. So as with any project, it would be a partnership. It would be a partnership between the city, between the community, and whoever it is that actually carries out that particular service. But that would be a transparent one, that would be a public one. But the idea that somehow like we would be buying something for, you know, a million dollars and then turning around and selling it for $1.2 million. And then that's, that's, I mean, that's, that's not going to happen.
Sweet. No flipping properties. Got it. Lehigh's talked a lot about smart growth in their strategic plan. I'm wondering if they've reached out to that administration at all about what their smart growth plan is? What this, I, with my understanding of smart growth and kind of the partnerships they want within the city, I don't understand how something so deep into South Bethlehem would be considered smart growth. But I'm wondering if they reached out to you about their smart growth plans at all?
You know, again, I, conversations have been cordial, but very general. And as to the details or anything else, I'd leave that to them.
Speaking of smart growth, having lived on the South Side forever, it's, it's kind of, it doesn't escape my, my attention how big Lehigh has gotten. And I was wondering how much of the city does Lehigh actually own?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm guessing Mr. Spurk doesn't probably know either.
I think of the total acreage in the city, about 1,100 acres, about 12% of the city.
12% of the, of the whole city?
I don't know if you.
Ms. Collins, do you, do you know if those numbers sound estimates or?
I think that's right, based on like what's in Lehigh. A little more here than there. It's about 1,100.
But that, that's just, that's just a guess.
Yeah, I think then if you'd look at the whole city and think that roughly the North Side and South Side are roughly equal, I think the North Side's bigger in acreage. Then you could figure out a percentage of what they own on the South Side. And if you looked at a map and looked at the area that was sort of industrial park east of.
That's, that's kind of my concern.
Yeah, like if you looked at a map, it was only, you sort of looked east of Shimer'sville and 412, that area, sort of north of 78, which is kind of industrial park. You know, you could then re-figure the percentage of the smaller pie, the whole city, south of the river, and south of the river and east of the industrial park area. Percentage would change then.
For what, for whatever it's worth, Bethlehem takes up, Bethlehem has a square mileage of 19.4 square miles. And Lehigh is made up of 2,100 acres, which equates to 3.28 square miles. Now, all of that's not located within the city of Bethlehem, but if we were to knock off maybe a third of that, just talking off the top of my head here, that could probably approximate some space for us.
Thank you, Cartographer Penelope.
Yeah, and I think, that's, yeah, that's kind of, I think that's kind of my.
Wasn't a bad estimate.
Mayor knows the city.
And I think that's kind of, I think that's kind of the point that I'm trying to get to is that like if you, if you look at how much they own of Bethlehem, it's kind of staggering. But if you looked at that, like under the lens of cut out the industrial park and cut out the North Side, how much of South Side do they own? And, you know, to echo what I've heard a lot of people say, including my son, Hey Jay, if you're watching, they, they own, they basically own the mountain and, and most of South Side. So for them to own another city block so far within, and I know that this is really not, and council doesn't have, like, I really don't think we have any say in, in any of this. But I kind of like, as a South Side resident, I, I just, I was really compelled to run because, you know, like I still live there and sometimes it feels like our voices aren't, aren't heard that much. And I just, it doesn't feel good to, to have them this far into, into the city. And especially when we talk about how are they as partners? And, and how are they, what is this concept of, of smart growth? And what are they giving to the city? How much do they pay in taxes? What are they providing? And I know that they provide a lot of, of good. You know, with the work with the ambassadors, they're crucial to our, our, our business district. And the South Side ours district is, is amazing. But when you think about like, to, to kind of paraphrase something that was said at the NAACP event yesterday, like, when are private interests going to let public interests win? And thinking about what, what the public interest could be, specifically against the private interest, like, like Lehigh, this isn't, this isn't a small organization. This isn't an organization that's taken loss after loss after loss at the hands of the city. As a matter of fact, they've taken a lot of gains. Like they've, they've been very successful here. And I, I don't think it's beyond reason to ask them to understand that like at some point, South Side should be able to win in this partnership as well, like true South, like the South Side residents. And if we think about what a good neighbor is, I, I would, I don't have to tell my neighbor Steve to not come sit on my front porch without an invitation. He knows that because he's a good neighbor. Meanwhile, the South Side residents had to rally in order to get a student housing overlay to stop the spread. So I just, sorry, it's already eight o'clock and I'm not going to, I'm not going to keep going. It's just, you know, it's, it's very difficult to continue to watch Lehigh spread. And I know that we can't solve this in here. Lehigh isn't in the room, to, to my knowledge, and they're really the ones who have to hear this. But I just, I hope that they would understand why there's so much conversation regarding this and, and how difficult this is for a lot of members of the South Side, how hesitant some of us have been to, to get involved in this because we don't want any of this bleeding over into the church. We just want them to have the funds they need to unite as a congregation. But there is a potential for a lot of harm here. The potential for a lot of good, which, which is amazing, but it really is in contrast to the potential harm that can be done with, with constant spread. And it's not just felt by the South Side. And I feel like sometimes it's thought that way because it happens to us a lot. But even our friend who keeps coming to talk about parking, a lot of reason why the parking authority is the way it is is because of, because of South Side and, and what happens there and the density on the South Side and the buildings that get built without consideration to what are we going to do with, with all these people who are going to be in these two new buildings that are like four stories high, but there's no parking for them? So I just, Lehigh, if you're out there, please.
Thank you, Ms. Leo. Any other questions or comments from members of council?
Yes.
Dr. E.
Yes, a lot has been said here tonight. Ms. Leo Oen has asked me to reflect on the South Side. And I'll just do a little bit. I, I asked the question, is there going to be anything left to preserve? You know, I remember as I, I lived in the 400 block of Pawnee Street. of Pawnee Street, we had neighbors, we had great neighborhoods, people who watched out for each other and each other's children. And I remember walking to Brockle, both as a, as a student, as a, as a teacher, and, and walking through Carlton Avenue, Montclair Avenue, and, and Burkle Avenue. There were families there and, um, neighborhoods, good people, some of the larger homes. I, you know, I know you know this, but sometimes I think, is there going to be anything left to preserve? Some of those larger homes had three and four generations of families, grandma, Aunt Sadie, parents, children, all living together in harmony. I mean, large, beautiful homes, Irish, German, Slovak, Hungarian, we all got along. And, um, now they're just bunches of housing, housing Lehigh students, waiting to house more Lehigh students. And I have nothing against Lehigh students. I was one myself. I just have watched, you know, she asked me to tell what was happening. I watched larger homes turn into two and three apartments, or sometimes into fraternity homes. And this would happen when the former children would sell their family home to investors. These homes are now owned by investors looking to rent to students. They're, the South Bethlehem Historical Society has a newsletter, and it's called Southern Exposure. Southern Exposure, Ken Reineer is the publisher. And in this spring 2021 edition, he gave, he did this drawing, he's an artist, of the bird's eye view, he said, bird's eye view of the Southern Business District on the South Side. One bird's eye view was from 1918, and, and the other bird's eye view was from 2021, like a hu, a span of 100 years. This is the 1918 one, bird's eye view, homes and neighborhoods, South Bethlehem Business District, from the Broadhead Avenue on the west to Webster Street on the east. And, and, and on the, the south was Packer Avenue, and to the north would be Second Street. So what do you see? The difference being 2021, for example, right here from, is it Vine Street over to Webster Street, a vanishing neighborhood. He called it this vanishing South Bethlehem neighborhood. And, and, and Lehigh University now is occupied that territory. Yes, it's from Vine to Webster, and from Packer on the south to Morton. Now part of the campus of Lehigh University. We need those neighborhoods now. We need those neighborhoods. And then, Northampton Heights, that's another story. There are little historic stories there. Northampton Heights was also gobbled up, but this time, of course, by the great Bethlehem Steel. In fact, there is the, the side story of how the steel offered the white residents of Northampton Heights larger compensations for their homes than the black residents. And there were five gentlemen, and I, I know their names, one of their daughters told me this story. They got together, once they learned that they were being offered lower prices for their homes than the white residents, the five of the gentlemen got together and they went to Mr. Eugene Grace and told him about it. And to his credit, Mr. Grace did agree to offer the men and their families a little more money for their homes. Many of them bought homes in other parts of the South Side. And one or two came to the North Side. But it's an interesting story that is a truth, not a story, it's a truth. Mr. Grace later sent his attorney to Second Baptist Church to apologize for this situation. But the problem was that Second Baptist Church was on Broadway, and the people who went to Second Baptist Church were in that western part of the South Side. And the people he, he should have spoken to were the St. Paul people who were from the Northampton Heights. So that, the, again, if, if you're interested in looking at this drawing that Ken Reineer did, these two drawings of the 1918 community and the 19, and the 2021 community, it's in Southern Exposure 2021. Also, the first picture on the first page of that newsletter, it shows, let me read this, the first picture shows the 14-story ruining building as it dominates the South Bethlehem Business District against the backdrop of South Mountain. The second picture shows an artist's concept, that's Ken Reineer's concept, of South Bethlehem as it might appear in 2031, 35, 15 years from 20, from 2000. And the question on this page was, what will the South Side central business look like in 15 years? Will it be preservation, or will it be new construction? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Enix. Any other questions or comments from members of council, as we're still on the mayor's report? Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Thank you. I don't want to bela, belabor this issue, but it is an important issue. And I thank everyone for updating us on the issue, the issues, because it is important. As we know, there's a lot of hearsay and a lot on different social media sites. So I'm glad that we've, that we were able to get a report on what really is happening. But I guess just to piggyback on what Councilman, Councilwoman Leon and Dr. Enix had said, again, I'm a, I'm an alumni of Lehigh also, as, as well as many family members, and I see the great benefit they do for the community. But I do have concerns because as Councilwoman Leon, especially Dr. Enix, talked about the lost neighborhood. And when we talk about the lost neighborhood, my children's grandparents and great-grandmother were part of the lost neighborhood. They lost their home on Vine Street and Summit Street when Lehigh made them move. And this was their home in which they basically raised their family. And it was, it was devastating, so devastating that three months after their great-grandmother was forced to move out of her home, which she actually provided as a boarding home for Lehigh students, she ended up dying. And many family members said, basically, she died of a broken heart. So I, I guess the reason I say this publicly is because my hope is that whatever happens with these churches and, and my heart, I, I feel for the congregation because I know it is really difficult emotionally to lose your church and, and to consolidate churches. But I also hope that whoever does get to purchase the churches will keep the community in mind, both in their heart and in their head, and do what is right for the community. Because my family has seen firsthand how heartbreaking and tragic it can be when you're forced out of your home and you lose that community in which you were raised in. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of council? Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to finish the comments by saying, as, you know, we talk a lot about preservation in, in our city as far as physical structures are concerned. But I think the one thing that we don't always talk about in the terms of preservation is that idea of what it means to live in Bethlehem, or the stories of so many of our parents and grandparents and great-grandparents about what has been, what the opportunity that has existed in the city of Bethlehem. And that's the thing that we take the most seriously in City Hall and in our administration, is the idea of how do we preserve that opportunity? We referred to it before as the promise, but it's something that drives all of us. It drives the emotion, I think, behind a lot of these conversations, is the idea that we want our city to continue to be the place that it was for our parents, our grandparents, our great-grandparents that came here without a lot of education, or limited education, or whatever it might be. And they were able to pass on a future to their children that was better than theirs. And that's, that's something that when we talk about preservation and whatever happens going forward, is the thing that's on the top of our mind that we need to make sure nothing happens to. Thank you, Mr. Cologne.
Thank you, Mayor Reynolds. We're gonna move on to the Finance Committee-
Yes.
Report from Dr. Enix.
The Finance Committee. The Finance Committee met tonight, Friday, January 17th, at 6:00 PM in Town Hall. The committee discussed and voted on five agenda items. First, amending the general fund related to several adjustments. Second, amending the general fund related to another several adjustments. Third, amending the non-utility capital improvement fund year-end adjustments. Fourth, amending the golf fund enterprise budget year-end adjustments. And five, amending the CDBG home budget year-end adjustment. Committee votes were taken on each of the five agenda items. The committee voted to recommend placement of appropriate bills on tonight's council meeting agenda for each agenda item. The five bills are on tonight's agenda for first reading. Wondellin Enix chair.
Thank you, Dr. Enix. Before we move on to ordinances, I think I skipped, being out of practice for a minute here, I think I skipped approval of the minutes for the January 3rd meeting. So I'm gonna briefly, any comments on the minutes for the January 3rd meeting? All right, so the minutes stand approved. Continuing on, back to ordinances. We have no ordinances for final passage this evening. So new ordinances, ask the clerk to read Bill 1 of 2023.
An ordinance of the city of Bethlehem, counties of Lehigh and Northampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the 2023 general budget. Bill 01, 2023 is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Quiatek?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, pass a 7-0. Bill 2 of 2023.
An ordinance of the city of Bethlehem, counties of Lehigh and Northampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the 2023 general fund budget. Bill 02, 2023 is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Any discussion? We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Quiatek?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, pass a 7-0. Bill 3, 2023.
An ordinance of the city of Bethlehem, counties of Lehigh and Northampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the 2023 capital budget for non-utilities. Bill 03, 2023 is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Quiatek?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, pass a 7-0. Moving on to Bill 4.
An ordinance of the city of Bethlehem, counties of Lehigh and Northampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the golf course enterprise budget for 2023. Bill 04, 2023 is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Quiatek?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, pass a 7-0. And finally, Bill 5, 2023.
An ordinance of the city of Bethlehem, counties of Lehigh and Northampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the 2023 community development block grant budget. Bill 05, 2023 is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We will call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Quiatek?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, pass a 7-0. Moving on to resolutions, we'll read Resolution 10A.
It resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem, in accordance with the municipal records manual, hereby authorizes the disposal of the public records for the Purchasing Bureau as stated in Exhibit A. Resolution is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Quiatek?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, pass a 7-0. Resolution 10B.
It resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem, that the mayor and controller and/or such other city officials as deemed appropriate by the city solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with R3 Construction Incorporated for the South New Street Water Main Installation Project. Resolution is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Quiatek?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, pass a 7-0. Please read Resolution 10C.
It resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem, that the mayor and controller and/or such other city officials as deemed appropriate by the city solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with K.L. Fulford Associates Incorporated for operation of the East Allen Township well systems. Resolution is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Quiatek?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, pass a 7-0. Resolution 10D.
It resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem, that the mayor and controller and/or such other city officials as deemed appropriate by the city solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with Core and Main LP for water main and AMI systems installation. Resolution is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Quiatek?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, pass a 7-0. Resolution 10E.
It resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem, that the mayor and controller and/or such other city officials as deemed appropriate by the city solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute an agreement to effectuate the transfer of the city issued handgun signed to Brendan Schlegel, a retired police officer. Resolution is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Quiatek?
Nay.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, passes 6-1. Resolution 10F.
It resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem, that the mayor and controller- that the mayor and controller and/or such other city officials as deemed appropriate by the city solicitor are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with Lehigh Valley With Love Media for Information Officer slash Communication Support Services. Resolution is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. I just have a quick, well, one a comment and then an ask of the administration comment. Really enjoying not only the content, but the quality of the videos that get posted to our social media. The, I know it's something this administration was big on and, and really, um, it's nice to see sort of some of the, whether it's, I think I saw one recently about, uh, our water and where our water comes from and, and the Bethlehem Corner and things like that. So I, I'm very, uh, glad to see it and, and getting this information out there. And the, the ask that I have, we may have received it and I, I might have just overlooked it. Wouldn't be the only thing I've ever overlooked. But the contract calls for quarterly reports on just sort of those analytics of engagement. Uh, if those could be shared with council, as I'd be curious to see what those, you know, what those numbers look like.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll, I'll start with Ms. Wilhelm.
Sure, I, I just wanted to second your comments about, um, the work that Lehigh Valley Love, uh, With Love has done. Um, from the very beginning, uh, they have provided a steady stream of clear and accessible, very user-friendly information. I think it, um, has exceeded my expectations and I had high expectations knowing of their reputation. So, um, fully behind the investment and appreciate the administration's, um, continued efforts to get information out, um, via social media, in particular where most of our residents are getting their information. Um, so I just wanted to, again, echo your, um, your comments and, and thank Lehigh Valley With Love for their great work.
Ms. Leon?
Um, mine is a question, I'm sorry, it's gonna be vague. My, my brain is kind of, um. I was wondering the, like, the role they play. Cause, uh, on one hand, it, it's the, the water and the sewage, which I thought was really informative. And I'd like that, the other one was like the South Side, not the South Side, but the Bethlehem Corner, where there was conversations surrounding, like, you guys interviewed Sonia Vasquez. And I was wondering, is the role that Lehigh Valley With Love plays, are they more informative about this is basic city government? Um, or is it, this is basic city government and these are other cool things happening in the city? I just, I'm wondering what, what are we gonna continue to expect from, from this contract?
Um, I would say that they are obviously the ones that film it and produce it. Um, it is, the ideas, um, that become the content originate in, uh, largely from conversations between me and Ms. Santora, Ms. Delgrasso and members of the administration. Uh, one of the things that we have obviously focused on is trying to tell stories of people within, um, the city that are doing great things, um, but also shine a light on just the great services that we provide. Um, and, uh, you are correct in that a lot of people do like to see where the water comes from or what's going on with UGI or whatever it might be. Um, so often what happens is, is that, you know, we have an idea, some of the administration has an idea. Um, you know, we're sitting there thinking about how do we necessarily tell different types of stories? Like, the other day, we had a meeting about coming up with the different themes for the different months, um, to be able to focus on different types of content. Um, so, yeah, they do a pretty good job of following directions and, um, uh, making sure that they're available for, especially when citizens who often have limited time, whether or not they're at their church or at their job or whatever, um, very flexible. And we appreciate, we appreciate that. There's also a lot of synergies too, because Lehigh Valley With Love does, um, a lot of the communications for the school district. So they find ourselves at the same events. So it's, uh, it's often a, uh, it's often a good partnership there as well.
And, uh, just to follow up, um, I know that there's a lot of conversations surrounding the affordable housing strategy and the homelessness strategy. Um, is there gonna be any coverage from Lehigh Valley With Love regarding those specific kind of things?
We try to get, we try to get them to come to film anything we do. Like, he, he was here last week when we had Senator Casey was here, um, live streaming that. So I think it is, I think it is our belief that, that he is going to be available for, for, for the, the Wednesday meeting. The Tuesday meeting, obviously, is available, um, through City Council's YouTube channel. Um, but when's the, the, so that Community Development Committee meeting would just be recorded as is. But, uh, the Wednesday meeting at NCC, I think he will be.
Okay, so he does, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I was so curious about this. But, um, so, some, outside of these settings, like you said, this is YouTube, it'll be out there. So if there is an opportunity for, for a live stream, that's when his services would be engaged. He comes, he livestreams things and that's another way.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes one of us does it. Sometimes, you know, it's Ms. Delgrasso does it or somebody within our staff does it if it's not something. I mean, we are, we're not paying this contract a great deal of money. So it's not as if he is here every day. It's usually once or twice a week, we're able to coordinate something. So sometimes it is us, but sometimes if we, if there's enough time in advance and there isn't something else going on that we want him to do, then it's something where we pull him in. But if there's any events that come up that you think are particularly important, um, we absolutely can make it a priority.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I just have some questions and concerns and, um, this is in no reflection, anything negative on Lehigh Valley, um, With Love because I think they do a great job in everything they do. And I did support them and, and spoke, um, publicly in supporting them last year for this contract. And the reason I, I supported this last year is I thought that it was really just a one, once and done contract for the newer mayor and administration to get on board. I didn't realize it would be an, an annual contract. And, um, I guess my concern is, I think this is something that is more of a luxury than a necessity within the city. And I'm wondering if, like, um, the mayor just says, sometimes people within his office, like, um, the director of mayor initiatives will do some of these things if, um, Lehigh Valley For Love With Love is not available. And I'm guess, I'm wondering why cannot these, this, like, public relations, social media type, tasks be absorbed by people within the city?
Well, I would say that, um, it is not a situation where, obviously, Ms. Santora and Ms. Delgrasso in particular have a lot of different responsibilities. That is not something that they would necessarily be able to handle. Um, it is not something that, that they have the time to go out to do. Many other cities have full-time communications people. Many other cities have full-time social media people, including cities in the Lehigh Valley. Um, we do not. Um, so for what this, uh, what the price is here, $1,500 a month, um, that we felt that it is a great value. And I can tell you, of all the things that we have done over the first year, um, I think that the value for what we're paying, I don't think there's anything higher as far as the stories that have been able to be told, the places that Ms. Santora and Ms. Delgrasso have been able to go with some of the things having to do with Bethlehem Corner to tell stories that have never been told before. And also to shine a light on what it is that our city employees do, um, day after day. And that is not something that they would have, that they would have the time to do.
Well, I guess my, my concern is that I think there's a lot of other, there's entities like, um, within city government and other, and, uh, levels of government, um, and other, you know, educational, um, districts and, um, corporations or whatever, that there are people with in-house that do these kind of things and that's my concern. And again, I think that it is a luxury and it's a great thing that I think they've done a great job. However, I have concerns that, um, you know, we have the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Business Association. We have the local media, but, um, print and social and online media. And we have people within the administration. We even gave up one EMS position to give an additional, um, administrative position. We've gotten rid of four firefighter positions, so that's five public safety positions. And I feel that, you know, we're in difficult times right now. We're in a, a high rate of inflation and we have many of our, um, taxpayers who are struggling every day to just meet the cost of housing and food. And I feel in good conscience that I really cannot approve the use of public funds for something that is not a true necessity, even though, again, it may be something that is good and a luxury. I don't feel like it's a necessity and, um, therefore I cannot support it this year. I really thought it was a once and done thing last year. And in good conscience and in representation of the taxpayers, I just feel like I cannot, um, support this, um, this contract right now.
Any other discussion from members of council? Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Queeteck?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Nay.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, passes six one. We'll read Resolution 10G.
It resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem that the mayor and controller and/or such other city officials as deemed appropriate by the city solicitor are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with PAC 2 LLC for general construction work at the wastewater treatment plant. Resolution is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Queeteck?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, passes seven zero. Resolution 10H.
It resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem that the mayor and controller and/or such other city officials as deemed appropriate by the city solicitor are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated for Attachment 4 to a May of 2021 contract, adding engineering services, uh, construction and, and construction management and inspection of the chemically enhanced primary treatment system project at the wastewater treatment plant. Resolution is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We'll call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Queeteck?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.
Aye, passes seven zero. And lastly, 10I.
Certificate of Appropriateness under provisions of the Act of Pennsylvania Legislature, Bethlehem Resolutions is hereby granted for 428 High Street to replace garage doors to preserve the structure. Resolution is sponsored by Dr. Enix and Ms. Leon.
Discussion. We will call the roll.
Dr. Enix?
Aye.
Ms. Queeteck?
Aye.
Ms. Leon?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Cologne.